Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Joe O'Shea from Manuka. Please keep the O'Shea family in your thoughts this evening. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild, here. Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, September open government report for licenses and permits received October 7th, 2022, from the Office of Economic and Community Development. 3B, cumulative license permits report received October 7th, 2022, from the Office of Economic and Community Development. 3C, single tax office city funds distributed comparison reports, 2021, 2022, year-to-date October 6th, 2022. 3D, correspondence received from October 12th, 2022, from OECD regarding code enforcement report for city council. 3E, single tax office third quarter information update regarding city school taxes.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So tomorrow, October 19th through Friday, October 21st, will be the annual Fall Greek Food Festival. It's at the Annunciation Greek Orthodox Church, and it's takeout only. Rain or shine, it's on Washington Avenue. That's all I have. Thanks.
Do any other council members have any announcements?
I have one. So Local 2305 Scranton DPW workers are going to be having a trunk retreat on Thursday, October 27th, from 5 until 8:00 p.m. at the Scranton DPW parking lot, and that's located at 101 West Poplar Street in Scranton. So that's a week this Thursday, from 5 till 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
I have one to add as well. So tomorrow, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., BOSCOS will be holding its annual Friends Helping Friends Charity Shopping Day. So this is an opportunity to be able to support some nonprofits, and you could go shopping. Donate $5 to one of 44 participating local nonprofits and receive a 25% off shopping pass that can be used almost anywhere in the store. Some organizations participating include the ARC of NEPA, the Women's Resource Center, and Friends of the Scranton Public Library. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
I have a few. Next Wednesday, or next Tuesday, October 25th, at 12:15 p.m., the city of Scranton invites all accountants, business owners, tax professionals, and other interested parties to the payroll preparation tax. For an info session, city officials and the city's payroll preparation tax collector, Berkheimer Tax Innovations, will discuss payroll preparation tax overview, most common questions about the tax, how businesses, landlords, nonprofits, and other filers can stay compliant, and a Q&amp;A session will follow for generally applicable questions. For questions about the info session, including accommodation requests, please contact trishazelitis@tzilaitis@scrattonpa.gov. Again, that's tzilaitis@scrattonpa.gov. Also, next Wednesday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., PennDOT will be holding a public meeting to discuss bridge projects on Cedar Avenue and also outbound from the city, towards the Biden Expressway and towards Pittston Avenue. The purpose of this meeting is to provide PennDOT staff and their design consultants an opportunity to explain the project and answer questions on an informal basis. Preliminary design plans will be available for review. Any participation is appreciated. If you can't make this public meeting, there is a virtual plan display that includes digital picture boards, and an online comment form will be made available to the public from October 1st through November 30th. It could be accessed by visiting penn.district4 website, penn dot pa dot gov backslash district four, and by clicking on the public meetings under the district links and selecting Lackawanna County, and the projects will come up. And that meeting will take place at South Scranton Intermediate School next Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's at 355 Maple Street. Also, another announcement I have, the Scranton Rec Authority is sponsoring a pet food and accessories drive to benefit local shelters. That will take place at Naug Park in the community room by the pool area on November 5th and 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Also, on November 5th, there'll be a Kindness for Kelly McDowell fundraiser. It'll be from at 5 o'clock at Montage Mountain Resort. Kelly McDowell is a beautiful 28-year-old who was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes in 2002. In 2016, her condition started to deteriorate when she started having complications. Sadly, in 2018, she lost 85% of her vision and was told she would need a kidney and a pancreas transplant from the same body. Finally, on May 23rd, 2022, Lehigh Valley called and said they had essential organs Kelly had been waiting too long years for. She went into surgery on May 24th and began her rehabilitation journey the next day. So anyone that could attend that fundraiser at Montage Mountain from 5, at 5 o'clock on November 5th, it'd be greatly appreciated. If you would like to send donations, monetary donations could be, checks could be made payable to Kindness for Kelly, and they could be sent to 2522 Boulevard Avenue, Scranton, PA 18509. And that's all I have for this evening. Mr. Voldenberg.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First on the list is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton. Item 7A, the DPW contract is up for final passage. I thought I heard last week that the hard numbers on this contract would be in third order this week. Did I misunderstand that last week?
As I said, if we receive them, to my knowledge, we haven't received them yet.
But it's up for final passage today?
As of right now, yes, it is.
Well, hopefully, the other three contracts, you give them fair warning that they should not send up the contract for legislation unless they have the hard numbers to accompany it, because I just think that's putting the cart before the horse. But that's just my opinion. What is the status of the other union contracts?
It's my understanding negotiations are still ongoing.
Okay, and the 2021 audit?
I haven't gotten any updates on the 2021 audit.
Second verse, same as the first. Okay, moving on. Did I hear you correctly that next week's caucus is the payroll preparation tax?
Yes.
You might want to start that at 4 o'clock or something. Does that may go on. Are they going to bring in the numbers and show us the money?
That's the anticipation, yes. It's an update on collections so far, so.
Yep. Well, let's hope they do. Speaking of money, the false alarm nuisance alarm legislation, I have no issue with it with one exception. Why is it that all the information gathered and all the records are going to be held in confidentiality? It says for public safety, but I don't understand the logic. We're generating revenue with these charges, and it's right that businesses and residences, if they have a false or nuisance alarm, should be subject to a charge. But why is all this information going to be confidential?
I don't have the answer to that question, but I'll hopefully find it out for you for next week.
My personal opinion is all financial information with regard to the city, all taxes, fees, charges, and delinquencies, all that should be a matter of public record, and it should be put on the city's website, and that should be a goal that the city works towards, so that there's full disclosure as to the revenues coming in and expenditures going out. And it shouldn't have to be a matter of coming to a council meeting and asking questions, or God forbid, having to do a write-to-know request. So please pass that information on to the administration. 5D, the Portnoy Law Associates getting the one-year extension on their contract for collecting the delinquent refuse fees. Not an issue, but I found it interesting that they've collected something like $2 million for the period, delinquencies from 2002 on to the present. Yet if you look at your city website and the refuse database that's there as of 1 August, the city is owed over $10 million in delinquent fees. So that's less than 20%. What would you consider to be an appropriate collection rate for delinquencies?
I don't think using that $10 million is setting the appropriate bar either, because like you said, that goes back to 2002, and there's a certain percentage of that that is considered uncollectible.
Okay.
Whether the estate changed hands, right? So I think that's a problem we've had going back, right, is having that data there to know, you know, what was what, and it was really just handed to us in a pile.
Well, still, I still think that it'd be nice to see that database made current, and hopefully, all databases. Item 5F, the $1 million grant for the Biden Streetscape and stormwater improvements. The only thing I don't understand is, when are we going to give priority to the neighborhoods who have no sidewalks, who have actual flooding of homes and businesses? Because I'm not aware of any home or business on Biden Street's eight blocks ever having been flooded. And at least they have sidewalks.
And I get your point, but the RACP program's set up for economic development, and it's for economic development with projects over $1 million.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get some priorities for the neighborhoods. Thank you.
I agree. But this specific program is designed for economic development with totals over $1 million. It can't be applied to that, unfortunately. Next on the list, Angelo Jarman.
It's good to see you all this evening. I'd like to open with some remarks, specifically as a reminder that as an institution, I do believe that our city council should pay no mind to fascists or their rhetoric. I feel that the rambling of bigots should have no place in these chambers, and no influence over our politics. I also believe that the ramblings of those who would defend such speech should also have no place here. But that is all for the opening remarks. I'd like to move on to more productive matters, specifically on the funding for Biden Street. Reading through the legislation, I have to say, I'm very optimistic about it. I do like that there has been money set aside for bike lanes, race crosswalks, traffic calling measures, as well as stormwater protection, and in general, favoring more pedestrian-centered development. So I would just like to come out in support of that. And another matter with the expansion of GCMC, I would like to speak a little bit on that. For many, many years, many people in my family have relied on the hospitals in Scranton, specifically GCMC, even before they were bought out by Geisinger, for their specialist care, as well as emergency treatment. And at the time, the resources that were provided were adequate for them to get the care that they needed. My grandfather has suffered from Crohn's for many, many years, and he received his treatment at GCMC. However, today, the hospital is overcrowded. There's not enough staff. There's not enough beds. Many patients find themselves waiting in stretchers in the hallways for hours, just waiting to get seen even after they're taken back. One of those people was a dear friend of mine several weeks ago. They had admitted themselves to the hospital for psychiatric issues, where they had to wait over 40 hours for a bed to open up at Lancaster Behavioral due to the closure of First Hospital in Kingston. During that time, they were kept in the hallway on a stretcher. They were not able to be attended to or be properly safeguarded from any measures that they might have been able to take to harm themselves, given that they were in a very dire mental state. They did not have adequate transportation to and from Lancaster Behavioral either. They ended up being transferred by a constable rather than any kind of medical transit, which obviously, if, I'm sure none of you here have ridden in the back of a police car, they are not very comfortable, to say the least, and definitely not adequate for transporting medical patients. In fact, they ended up needing to take an Uber back, which I'm sure was very expensive, considering that that was paid for by the taxpayers. I do believe that getting proper transit to and from the hospital is, should be a priority for the city of Scranton. But yes, the shortcomings in the care that my friend has received are not necessarily the fault of any individual nurse or practitioner, but rather a shortcoming of the hospital as a whole, of the city as a whole, to fail, who have failed to provide the proper facilities to expand the emergency room, to expand specialized health care in this area, so that those who need psychiatric help do not need to make a three-hour commute down to Lancaster for the help that they need. I believe that's an undue burden. And I know that there are growing pains associated with expansion. I'm familiar with that myself. The parking lot across from the hospital now used to be my elementary school audubon. I still remember when that school ended up getting torn down due to mold, and I would definitely like to see something come out of it other than a gravel parking lot. I would like to see facilities opened up that will save lives, that will make sure that people who are injured and in need get the care that they need and the care that they deserve. Thank you very much, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Good evening, council. Well, I think the first thing I'll say here is, at a prior council meeting, I talked about the city of Scranton's own government being the problem. And, you know, today, I'd like to say that the gentleman who spoke before me today talked about mental health and health care. Well, the city of Scranton had an eight-floor hospital called the Scranton State Hospital that had psychiatric care and drug, you know, drug abuse counselors and care. But the government itself closed it and ripped it down and destroyed the state of Pennsylvania's health care system. And when you take a look at what's happening in our country, we have terrible leadership. I watched the presentation here about taking over DPW. It's beyond ridiculous that the city can't, after 150 years, figure out how to collect trash. Now, there's a chemical you can add to latex paint that hardens it. But, you know, by the same token, the city has a responsibility to furnish the residents with, you know, trash removal. And if we're going to decide what we are and what we aren't going to take, that's a beautiful thing. But you know what? The city needs to create a stream to handle every kind of trash in this city, because if it doesn't do that, it's going to be dumped somewhere else illegally. Okay? The major problem this city has is its government, and the country. I mean, look what's happening in the hearings, you know, in regards to the Russia probe. We find out that all the warrants were illegal, and there was no reason to issue anything against Trump. It was all political on the inside with the Democratic Party and Hillary Clinton. Joe Biden has a part to play in that. Look at where our country really is. We're in bad shape here. You know, we're talking about spending more money. The average taxpayer is completely out on their feet. They're completely broke. You know, we just got out Act 47. We're going to agree to a contract. The residents have no idea what the cost of it is, and the government itself doesn't care. We're talking about spending more money, when the truth of the matter is, when you put somebody to the head of DPW, and they can't run that department, then why are they there? Look what happened to the Scranton Sewer Authority. We loaded it up with employees. A lot of them were political, and we torpedoed it. And somebody said to me the other day, "Leon, pay $130 for water and sewer for two people in this city. Somebody's out of their mind." But yet, the reserve fund went to Pennsylvania American Water. And like you said yourself, Council President Donahue, the city borrowed money to inject it into the pension plan, and then took money and paid it off. But the vast bulk of that money disappeared. And, you know, the other thing is...
I don't know where that money disappeared to, because you're allowed.
Well, the government spent it, but it sold the sewer authority. And don't forget, the council president was opposed to the sale of the sewer authority.
My words.
But he introduced it.
Introduced what?
The sale of the sewer authority. The council president was opposed to the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, but yet he introduced it. Nothing can get introduced in this chamber.
Not this council president.
Not you. I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about our government being the problem. This city's government is the problem. You know what I'd worry about? The council has the right to do investigations, and my question is, I'm tired of people in Clark Summit telling me the mayor of Scranton lives there. Okay? So I think we need an investigation, because does the mayor really live in Scranton? I don't care what her address is. I don't care where she rents. But you know what? A fireman and a policeman can't have a prop, live outside the city. Somebody to investigate them and take their job from them. And we're starting to talk about where we're taking the city. The city just left Act 47, and we're going loose on everything we're going to do. And the other thing is, what can the residents really afford? And you know something, Council President, I think I'd do an investigation and find out where the mayor lives for sure, because you know what? There's probably cameras at Summit where she lives. Okay? And let's see where the mayor actually lives. Okay? And let's start really looking at what we're doing here. And if we can't run DPW, I don't know what to tell you.
The city controller is responsible for verifying the residency of all city employees. Next on the list, Aaron Sepkowski. Mr. Sepkowski, I know you're not a resident of the city of Scranton. Are you a taxpayer of the city of Scranton?
I have interest in the city of Scranton.
Are you a taxpayer in the city of Scranton?
I have multiple interests in the city of Scranton, rolling assets and others.
Okay.
Mr. Donahue, may I ask why you ask that?
Because council rules state that only taxpayers and/or citizens of the city of Scranton have the ability to speak at a city council meeting?
Thank you. Aaron Sepkowski, and yes, I'm from Moscow, Pennsylvania. I am a candidate for the 113th District, and over the past few months, I came to multiple government entities and introduced myself with no issues. I'm just here simply to introduce myself to the council and to the residents of Scranton. And I'm running for state representative, like I said, in 113th. Scranton's a big chunk of that district, along with the North Pocono area from where I reside. And I'm just here to introduce myself. Like I said, I'm 41 years old. I'm a businessman from Moscow. I'm a dairyman from Moscow, and I'm proud to say I'm a father of a 13-year-old son. I invite everybody here to look into my resume for why I'm running. I think a lot of us have same interests, and I just want to build unity between two parties. And that is all I'd like to report on here today, and invite you all, again, to look me up. I have a meet and greet tomorrow at the Old Brook. If you guys want to have interactions one-on-one, I welcome that. And thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Hello, council. I really don't even know where to start. Last Monday, the people in the house next to me, there's a duplex on the far side, they were evicted, because I didn't know any of this. About 5 o'clock, they started putting out their garbage, like all the houses do for Monday. At 7:00, 7:15 or so, I came out to walk my dog. There was a mountain of stuff out there. There's a piano and baby stuff, just a dumpster load full. So the next day, of course, when the people saw it, they attacked it, and stuff was scattered all over. It was just a big, huge mess. Wednesday, number eight, they won't tell me his name, number eight puts a citation on my house for rubbish. I phoned downstairs. She said she'd have him phone me. Of course, nobody ever phones you back from in this city. Friday, he put another citation on my house for rubbish for the house next door. You know, a little ticket like this. Now, I got mad, and I phoned downstairs. I said, "My neighborhood is a mess for years, and you're worried about, you keep giving me tickets for the house next door." Monday morning, I got a $100 ticket. This is nothing but a blatant abuse of his power. I think he retaliated because I phoned downstairs. I've complained for years. This man never sees nothing wrong. Five weeks, that tractor-trailer sat down there. They don't know nothing about it while they put a motor in and out of it. There's junk still all over the place. I got that behind my house where my lot ends 160 feet, the next two houses on Troop Street, it's like junkyards. Next to them, there's cars in the street for two years. He doesn't see any of this. He sees my lawn furniture and my porch. I had two 24 bottles of water I left there because I just didn't bring them in. Right here, rubbish. He gave me a $100 ticket. It's got 48 hours to pay, but if you want to appeal it, you got 20 days for $300. That's like extortion. It's like legal extortion. They want you... They want you to just pay the $100 rather than appeal it. But it says right here, the first line, you don't get your $300 back if you win. What kind of crap is that? I'm telling you, this man's a total disgrace. I've been complaining, I remember a year or so, I said he ought to be fired for the job he's doing in my neighborhood. No wonder he's so bad at me. I'm his boss. He works for me. And, and here, I'm, he's the victim when you go downstairs and complain. Besides that, I, it took, I've never seen such a mess trying to figure out how to park. I don't know my license number. I've had that license plate since '04. That's the sticker on it. I don't have an idea what it is. I never look at it. I have to get the license and that, this is ridiculous when you can put a bunch of quarters in a meter. Anyway, I'm going to appeal this. You know, the mayor wants to put Bidenville on the map. I'm going to put it on the map and she won't like it when I start showing all these pictures of my neighborhood I've taken for five years, six years. This, this isn't right though. This man is abusing his authority, his power, and it, it... What, what are you supposed to do? Pay $300 for a, or a $100 ticket? I'm going to pay the $300 and if I have to subpoena you people that I've complained about, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Dave Dobson.
Mr. Elman. Mr. Elman. Mr. Elman. You called the department? Mr. Elman, did you call the department?
Did I what?
Did you call the department? License and inspections?
I just talked, I just talked to the, one of the girls in the office downstairs. And of course, she defends the man and that's as far as I got.
The rules apply to everybody.
I have no complaints about her. She gave me this form and told me fill it out and-
All right, thank you. Mr. Dobson?
Good evening, Council. You know, that was one of the things that kind of turned me sour on the leadership of the taxpayers was they pushed all of that. And I could see where somebody was going to be on the losing end someday. It's really not right. Especially when you have neighbors that actually, in other towns, I had neighbors would put it in front of my house, my side and, and the landlord would say, "Oh, you put that there? You better pick it up." You know, it was like two and a quarter per bag and they weren't big bags. The property over here, I still think that should be looked at by the city and maybe some consideration as to acquiring it. We should try to settle our contracts. I don't want to see like the last time, seven years, just going down the tubes. And I hope that the unions are, and pension boards are taking measures in this stock market to protect the amount of money in there. Now, inflation is a big issue this year. And 25% of our crops yields are down, 25%. Saudi Arabia is siding with Russia. And we have a war in Ukraine that Mr. Putin. And I will point out that our last Republican president had a lot of good times playing footsie with them and negotiating imaginary Trump Towers in Moscow and what have you. But I'm a little tired of when they finally win, what they're making an issue of inflation that getting told, being called unpatriotic ingrate because that's all I've gotten from that party over the last 40 years. And once again, the vote is up. And I can only consider what a person promised to try to do. And if he or she achieves it, great. But if there's other forces precluding him from that achievement or her, then that's the way it is. I can't hold it against them the next time around if they're running. And I don't fall in, fall for that type of, so consider who you're voting for and what they're promising to do. And on refugees, which has been mentioned at times here, I'm not against any refugees at all. But there are so many refugees in the world that America can't take care of them all or take them all in. And it's sad that we can't do it. But we have to get birth control and family planning to UNICEF and fund it for global family planning and stop these excessively large populations from growing. And along with environmental refugees. And now, I have that article here from last week. Flynn's Reawakened Roadshow Brings With It The Army Of God. And they're calling people pedophiles and they're calling people unpatriotic and they're calling people everything under the book. Here's another one that was in the Sunday paper. It's on pro-life. It's Doug Mastriano and Professor Crudite, their Mr. Oz. And anybody that wants to end Social Security, Medicare, play with destroy public education and everything else, I'm sorry, you're not pro-life. Pro-life is all life. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. That exhaust is signing chief this evening. Would anyone else like to address council?
Tom Coyne Menucha. Members of council first would like to address a brief comment that was brought up before the body tonight. At one point in time in the U.S. history, the black population was considered three-fifths of a person. This was used to suppress opinions, voting, and the ability to express themselves, own property, and control their own lives. Part of the reason why the First Amendment is there is because everyone has the right to speak. We don't have to like it. We don't have to agree with it. But because of people being marginalized and told they cannot have a voice because they are unwanted or not a full person, is part of the reason why the First Amendment right to speak is so important. So that people who were formerly three-fifths of a person are not stripped of the ability to express opinions. Now, and from that, a number of month, a number of months ago, it was brought forth to this body by one of the participants, a question on whether or not the recycling funds were put into a separate account. It was reported back by Mr. West to this body and to the public that because of ongoing legal issues, that could not be discussed. The only issue I have with that is in following up with Mr. West was the entire conversation on the funds and where they went were an oral conversation. There is no paper trail. This was done direct, one-to-one person, leaving the body from an official question without record. Anything that's asked for by the city population should have a paper trail if you're going to follow through with it. I cannot get information on a question asked from one person to another person and rely on that in any documentation. It's important that when a citizen brings something forward, that there be a physical track to go back to. Mr. Schuster asked Mr. West today on savings, on whether or not it was $160, $180,000 or the $300,000. He asked it clearly and concisely. Twice, Mr. West rephrased the question, avoiding it first, going for a completely different question and then convoluting it by asking about whether or not the two figures are to be added together or separate. And the question he actually posed, the first and second, were actually just a reverse way of asking the same exact question. They avoided the, they avoided the concept of the comparable cities were not comparable and how did they get these differences? That was completely sidestepped and it was wrong. I think it was direct, a direct subterfuge. Last, Marketplace at Steamtown is doing a lawsuit against the parking operators for mismanagement. It was filed per the papers on September 16th. Basically, in the community development properties of Scranton were the parties. Under this deal prior, the city sold one of the garages to Steamtown for $1. And this was part of the arrangement to eliminate the mall as a competitor to the city parking authority. It's amazing that we have to destroy competition in a marketplace and make something protected. I think a monopoly is what our government should go for because that helps the population. It's a seven board that includes the mayor and city council president. Yet, during that meeting last week, when it was taught, when it was in the paper that they actually are having trouble paying on their bonds, not a single question was brought up about this issue, especially by someone who should be informed of it because they're a member of the board. That leaves a lot of questions that it would be interesting-
So what? You don't want to just talk about litigation strategy in a public meeting?
If we're going to increase the contract another seven years and they are already defaulting on money, it is a legitimate question to ask. If you cannot pay the money now because you're already defaulting on it, why should we continue to go forward?
That was a result of the pandemic.
Does not matter what the risk, does not matter-
When money's not coming in, you can't send money out.
Does not matter what the, does not matter what the fault of it is. There is a question on extending a company, extending to a company from a company that is not paying its current debts.
We've known they haven't been paying their current debts for months now.
Then why weren't they brought up? Why wasn't a question?
Because they, they answered the que, they, they said that they were refinancing and that this was a part of the plan in terms of refinancing their debt. But thank you, Mr. Coyne. Your time's up. Would anyone else like to address council?
Council, Roger Leonard, DPW Union President. I wasn't going to speak today, but one of you guys actually mentioned, you said, "How does the DPW feel about, excuse me, how does the DPW feel about the Rubicon systems?" As one of you mentioned before, we have a, we have a different relationship now than maybe two years ago when they were talking about getting these systems together. And we did offer to actually do some organizations of routes that maybe are, you know, some routes start in different areas and they get kind of rotated around the city. It spends a little more fuel than we need to be spending. And we discussed that we'd be able to work with them on that. We also, one of the big things he said was with the people taking pictures of, they have the, their systems are actually like, it's an iPhone, basically. So when they pull up and there's a stop and there's a big stop and there's something there, they take a picture on the iPhone, it goes back to the Rubicon system. But that in itself, I mean, is basically, everybody has an iPhone now. Everybody has a cell phone. So if you buy a $200 laptop and you put, the guy sends a picture from his iPhone to the email address to the dispatcher, it does the same job. I mean, basically, I, I heard Chris, and Chris is a good guy, I like him. And I heard him say like, "Well, you know, I need this in order to come out." Well, that's kind of the supervisor's job is if there's an issue, they come out. So, I don't know. It's, it's kind of like an electronic supervisor. So when they're talking $399,000 in savings, I don't know if it's because they're going to get rid of the garbage supervisor because they don't need one if they have this electronic system. I don't know if that's in that 399. But I did hear them talk about removing routes and saving on personnel. Now, I don't know if you recall, but they tried that before. They pulled a garbage truck, has to be a few months back now. I, I don't know what it was. And we tried, they told us, "Well, follow the Rubicon systems." And we did, to a T. And it left garbage, unfortunately, all over the city in different areas because they're not complete routes, the systems that are going in there. We do understand that things, routes do need to be optimized so we're not, we're not running all over the city. But it's something really that's, it's an easy fix. It's something to be done in-house. And I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was something that they could have done maybe two years ago with how the, the situation was. But as of right now, we have a pretty good relationship. We all live in the city. We care about the city. We want things to work. I think $450,000 is a large price tag to have a bunch of iPhones and to not be able to say, "Hey, guys, you know, can we just pick up this garbage today, that garbage tomorrow?" There's only 15 routes on a day. It's, it's not a big process and we'd be willing to work with them on that. Another thing is, when they pulled those routes and you had all these problems, Rubicon didn't do what it was supposed to do. And it was supposed to send us to these areas and you were supposed to, you know, fix these problems and, you know, just follow the routes. So we followed the routes and garbage, I mean, you remember, garbage got crazy. They also have to realize too is that they ordered five garbage trucks that are smaller than the ones we have right now. So I don't know if they're trying to optimize how the city is with the trucks that they currently have. But if, I don't know how you optimize. If you're optimizing for 25-yard garbage trucks at 11 garbage trucks and you order five 20-yard garbage trucks, now you're obviously not going to pick up the same amount of garbage. And then when you switch to these different, I don't know if they're, they're optimizations of the routes, I don't see, I don't see people going and doing things that aren't required for them to do during the day. Things that, you know, our guys do on a daily basis, there's above and beyond things that are, we do constantly. So I mean, what I heard was the savings comes from pulling a truck, throwing more tonnage on people's shoulders and backs in a time where it's supposed to be, you know, we all care about workers, we call about essential employees. And to me, when you say optimize, 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 we're in, we're in a city right now that's growing population-wise, but you don't see it because you don't see houses going up all over the place. But I see it because I own a bunch of rentals. So I know the people coming into rent is, it's not one or two in apartment, it's four, five, six are asking, seven, eight. So our population is going up. I don't think cutting a route, buying smaller garbage trucks is going to set us up for any type of future that we have coming up. If, if you see how the housing market's going, I don't think we're going to be a good place to actually take care of the refuse two, three- to actually take care of the refuse two, three, four, five years down the road. If you have any questions.
I mean, I don't think I have any, does anyone?
No. In fifth order, I'm going to ask Mr. Waldenberg to send something over to Larry, because one of the questions I did have on my list that I never made it to tonight was the fact of the 20-yard garbage trucks and whether that is going to change those routes in this system and if the savings still remain with the wear and tear in the fuel on those vehicles.
Yeah, I don't see that. I mean, that's five times, you know, 20, five times five is 25, so you lost actually a garbage truck right there to pick up that route of garbage. So once you drop down, you cut yourself a truck already in that situation. I don't know where they're going. Again, I'm willing to work, and us as a union are willing to work with them. But I mean, I didn't see, you know, three years, $450,000, and then, oh, well, we leased the systems. Okay, so what does that mean, another three years for another $300,000 to, you know, to watch people like electronically, but you already have a supervisor to watch people? I mean, how the systems worked before is you just called it in, hey, 144 Music or whatever didn't have their garbage out, okay, guy wrote it down. It wasn't complicated.
Right, and I, you know, I appreciate, you know, your perspective. I think it's important, I think we all need to hear it, right? But I just need to stick to the time limit to keep the same rules for everybody else.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Delmar Zevich, Scranton City Taxpayer. I think it's important at this time that we should reanalyze how the city got to where it is and who built this city in the first place. My family is Polish, I'm the Polish son of an Irish mother. And the first Poles to come to the United States were military leaders during the revolution. We have statues and monuments to them now out in the square. Kacznier Spawski, America's first LGBT hero, and Tadeusz Koszusko, who dedicated his entire fortune upon his death to the freeing and education of Thomas Jefferson's slaves. Thomas Jefferson, we know, made sure that that did not happen. The next Poles to come to America came to Haiti at the behest of Napoleon to put down the Haitian Revolution. Instead, the Poles, seeing the Haitians oppressed by a foreign power, much as we all know Poland was at the time, defected and helped Haiti overthrow the French rulers. Later, as oppression in Poland grew from the Russians, the Prussians, later the Germans, and the Austrians, 700,000 Poles moved into Pennsylvania alone to work in the anthracite mines. The anthracite mines were predominantly mined by Poles around the turn of the century. But when they got here, the community was already built up by the Irish immigrants, the Irish who had come here from Ireland largely after the mass famine that was perpetuated by the English Crown. Because the English Crown believed the goods that Ireland could produce were more valuable than the Irish citizens. And so millions died, and millions were forced out of the country and came here to Scranton, to Pennsylvania, and later on, the Poles for much the same reason came. During this time, during this mass immigration of 700,000 Polish, the Congo was experiencing a genocide, a genocide personally executed by King Leopold II of Belgium, who was given permission by the United States government, not the Belgian government, by the United States government, to go in and over-exploit the Congo and destroy its people, all because its natural resources were more valuable to King Leopold than the Congolese. 10 million Congolese were killed during this time. Only 5 million Poles died in the entirety of World War II, in the concentration camps, the Holocaust, and general war. Over twice as many Poles were killed at the request of King Leopold II to exploit and destroy the Congo, again, with the assistance of the United States government. This continued. After Leopold's death, the Congo continued to be exploited by Belgium. And later on, when they vied for independence, the United States and Belgium conspired to execute their, or to assassinate their first democratically elected leader, putting them into a cycle of civil war that goes on today. This is why there are Congolese refugees here in Scranton. This is why there will be more in Scranton. This is why we should be welcoming them, because the Congolese are not here to exploit what we have. They are here for the same reason the Irish came, for the same reason the Polish came, because their own country is being destroyed by colonialism, by exploitation, by war. They're undergoing continuous war at the behest of governments benefiting from the natural resources of the Congo. It was recently in 2019 that people were being judged for war crimes there, including but not limited to mass rape, destruction of villages, the enforcement of child soldiers, attempted genocide, the destruction of communities. It is unacceptable that anyone would refuse immigrants here, especially in Scranton. Anyone who's participated in the Italian Food Festival, the Greek Food Festival, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, has inadvertently celebrated the success of immigration and the benefits that it brings to our community. The Congolese refugees here, and I hope to see more of them, are merely the next people to come here, to build up the city, to make it great. They are no different from the Irish, they are no different from the Polish, they are no different from the Italians who came to escape the violence from the Italian reunification. They are and will be an essential part of this community, and I hope to see more of them. Anyone who suggests otherwise is directly offending the Polish, the Italian, and the Irish community of Scranton and the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. So the first one, Mr. Waldenberg, if you could send correspondence over to Larry West and ask him if the 20-yard trucks that were being purchased in the capital budget over the next, I think, two years, if they're going to have to adjust the Rubicon system for the size of those trucks, and if we're going to maintain the same savings that was estimated at this point in time when it comes to the area of wear and tear as well as fuel.
I'll ask those questions.
All right, thank you. Also, Mr. West, if you could send over to Mr. West, ask him if he could send over who the two city officials are that are assigned to our disaster assistance application program, and what actions have been taken on DR 4506 and DR 4508 up until this point.
I will, sir.
All right, next, this one's going to be a comment. So I saw the news and heard about the slides coming down at Naog. Not very happy about this. I do understand that, you know, we had a presentation where the mayor did say, she presented that the slides won't be in the pool plan, and I understand that in that she said that we're not going to build a facility around these slides. But these slides were purchased with taxpayer money. We spent $200,000, give or take, on these slides. And I think we should have at least left them until we had a final plan. On the 9th of March of 2021, we had a presentation that came to counsel and caucus. We had Nick Hughes from MKSD, who did the facility study, and we also had George Dynas from Councilman Hunsinger, who was a aquatic design, planning, and operations group agency who was an aquatic expert. On 3/9/21, he said that there was no corrosion on the slides, there was no cracks on the slides, there was no leaks on the slides, and they could be reused from their inspection. I don't understand why these slides were destroyed over the last few days. And I think it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
No, none at this time, thank you.
Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I do, thank you. I would like to take a minute and address the mayor's decision to remove the slides at Naog Pool Complex. First, I was shocked by the decision, and I disagree with it. As far as I'm aware, and what we've been told, the slides are still in relatively good working condition. The mayor stated in the paper today that the slide manufacturer has gone out of business, and that is the reason she's taking them down. This makes absolutely no sense. There are thousands of water park slides in operation around the country. I can't imagine that the city couldn't find another way to get parts if they were needed. Where there's a will, there's a way. Think about some appliances and items you have in your house where the original manufacturer has gone out of business. It doesn't mean you throw it out the window. If it's still in good working condition, there's always someone else that makes the parts. They don't make Model 4Ts anymore, but they're still on the road. All right? So did the mayor investigate if there was any other company that would make these parts? Did she contact anyone? We don't know. We've heard numerous times from the mayor about a park plan, but here we are today, still with nothing. We don't need a plan from the mayor, we need action. The slides that the mayor is tearing down represent Scranton's revitalization 20 years ago, a pool complex that everyone was proud of and where thousands of residents came each year. The slide was the main attraction. Now all we have is an empty space with overgrown grass and unsightly blighted mess where a bustling pool complex once existed. Unfortunately, this is starting to represent Mayor Cognetti's administration. I'll talk little to no action. The mayor refuses to think outside the box on this project. When the issue first arose, two years ago, counsel was ready and willing to do whatever it took to get the ball rolling on this project. That included borrowing money, when the interest rates were at their all-time lows, to fund this capital project and reinvesting in the park, along with looking at some other creative financing mechanisms to refinance it. The mayor refused. Instead, the mayor has decided to constantly delay this project and use excuses after excuse. It seems to me the mayor is waiting for something to happen. When, what we need is someone to take leadership role and make this happen. It may be hard for the mayor to understand how important this park and pool complex is to people, is one of the main attractions we have in the city. I, along with many other residents, are so disappointed in the mayor's decision to tear down what once represented progress. I am personally disappointed with her continual lack in action and leadership on this issue. I, along with my colleagues, will continue to fight for the resurrection of this pool complex. That is all I have.
Thank you. I just have two things. Mr. Waldenberg, would you be able to reach out to the administration, specifically, I believe the fire department, on this fire alarm legislation, 5C, regarding Section 9 that was brought up in fourth order, and the confidentiality clause that's in there? Is that new to the ordinance? And if so, why was it placed in? I know it does say that as long as, you know, what's being held confidential falls under the right-to-no request law, but could you just reach out to them and figure out and find out those answers?
I will, sir.
Thank you. And I also got a complaint about a drain on the 400 block of Crane Avenue back Manuka. Apparently, every time it rains, the drain just clogs up and creates a big puddle there. So I know we don't, so would you be able to reach out to both PA American Water and also to DPW to see who's responsible for that drain? It's literally right in the middle of the block of the 400 block of Crane.
I'll do that.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, amending file to counsel number 81 of 2021 to add a validation notice to the collection procedure and authorization regarding unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction and ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances regarding fines to be imposed for the city of Scranton's fire department's responses to false alarms in the city, establishing fines to be imposed for the activation of an alarm device which is determined to be a false alarm by the fire department, authorizing the administration and enforcement of said fines, and prescribing penalties for violations of this ordinance.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, Frank, could we reach out to the administration? And there was a commenter tonight brought up in public comment about a disclosure piece in this document. Can we find out why the information wouldn't be disclosed?
I will, sir.
And, you know, I'm going to vote for this tonight to move it to sixth order, but I think there's a couple of questions that we want to answer here. Mr. Donahue brought up a question, too. If we can get the answers to both of those, I will vote for this to move it to sixth, but I'd like some answers on that if we could. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to extend by one year the term of the city's agreement with Portonoff Law Associates, LTD, for the collection of delinquent municipal claims and to otherwise amend the agreement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'll vote to move this. But Mr. Waldenberg, remember last week I brought up some issues with Portonoff sending out bills to people who don't have delinquent garbage fees?
That's correct, sir. We don't have an answer as yet.
Clarification on that, or any follow-up or feedback from them?
I'll follow up.
And there seems to be multiple ones at multiple houses that, there's a problem. So we need them to fix that before I even think about extending their contract.
I will, sir.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, in the backup document, it says they've collected about $2 million. Mr. Waldenberg, can we reach out to get the actual number that Portonoff has collected to date? And then can we also ask if they've identified a number of delinquencies for collection for the extension year? If they've identified a number of delinquencies?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I agree, I'd like a little bit more information on where we stand currently with the delinquencies, and maybe what percentage of delinquencies have not been collected from what they're previously trying to collect, and how much we would be looking to collect from over the past year. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Just on the question, just briefly, so the original agreement we had with Portonoff only covered between 2002 and 2020. So at this moment, we don't have a delinquent tax collector, or delinquent refuse fee collector for 2021 or 2022. And that's what this, that's what this extension covers and adds into that. At the same time, we are working with, since it's been put on the tax bill, we're working to try to figure out if the Tax Claim Bureau could pick up delinquent refuse, you know, for the years where it was on the tax bill. We're, you know, we're speaking with the Single Tax Office to see if they're able to take that up, or if we're able to bring that in-house ourselves. But the delinquency rate has gone down significantly since it's been put on the tax bill. So it's not as heavy of a lift as it might have been in the past. But we are working through that. That is why this is only a one-year extension, just to give us some more time to work through that. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bright Sir LLC to collect, organize, and track third-party inspections for the Scranton Fire Department.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F, for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $1 million to be used for the streetscape and stormwater improvements on Biden Street from Jefferson Avenue to Mifflin Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, file to council number 26, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement with Local Lodge 2305 of the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, AFL-CIO.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, file to council number 27, 2022, amending file to council number 37 of 2016, and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into concession agreements with community development properties Scranton, Inc., with respect to metered parking in the city of Scranton and the garages owned by the Parking Authority of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania pursuant to the Scranton Metered Parking System concession and services agreement and Scranton Parking Facilities System concession and lease agreement, and to authorize certain actions and ancillary agreements contemplated by the metered system concession agreement and the facilities concession agreement as amended by the file of council number 23, 2018, to authorize the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into the Third Amendment to concession and lease agreement to amend Article 2, Section 2.1 to extend the term to 45 years from date of execution, Article 7, Section 7.1 to adopt a new rate schedule, Article 4 to authorize application for American Rescue Plan funds for capital improvements, and Exhibit G to update the list of meter closure dates due to Juneteenth.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I, you know, I wish we weren't in this position where the Parking Authority even had to give up possession of the parking system, but unfortunately, that goes back over a decade to a former council's refusal to pay off the debt payment that the city did guarantee for the Parking Authority, which led to this agreement in the first place. You know, it's not an ideal situation, but really, the alternative is, is that if the current, if NDC, who's the current operator, owner of the parking system, is not able to pay off their bond issues, if they're not able to pay off their debt, a receiver will come in and will charge whatever rates they want to charge in order to recoup their initial loan. So although it's, this is not ideal, this is the best, this is the best way forward, not only for the parking system in downtown, but also for the businesses and residents that live downtown. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 133, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton Mayor's Youth Art Committee to the Lackawanna County Community Project 2023 grant to benefit Scranton adolescents.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, Resolution Number 134, 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with PMA Management Corporation to provide interested parties with sufficient information to prepare and submit responses for consideration by the city of Scranton for third-party administration, self-insured workers' compensation, and heart and lung claims.
What is the recommendation? The chairperson for the committee on finance?
As chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 135, 2022, authorizing the reappointment of Catherine J. Gil-Martin, 1525 Capous Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the Historic Architectural Review Board. Catherine Gil-Martin's term on the Historical Architectural Review Board expired on October 11, 2022. Ms. Gil-Martin's new five-year term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on October 11, 2027.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 136, 2022, authorizing the reappointment of Todd Posley, 1137 Rundle Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Planning Commission. Mr. Posley is reappointed for an additional four-year term effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on December 31, 2026. Mr. Posley's current term expires on December 31, 2022.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 137, 2022, authorizing appointment of Keisha Williams, 518 East Delm Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Human Relations Commission, replacing Tara Mann Shanker, whose term expires October 14, 2022. Ms. Williams's five-year term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire October 14, 2027.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, Resolution Number 138, 2022, appointment of Dwayne J. Heisler, 526 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority, effective upon execution of the resolution. Mr. Heisler will be replacing Micah S. Woodard, who resigned December 19, 2021. Mr. Heisler will fill the unexpired term of Micah Woodard, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2025.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, Resolution Number 139, 2022, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Middle Mile Broadband Program through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration for funding to improve the city's infrastructure to up to $2,450,000, $1 million.
What is the recommendation? The chairperson for the committee on community development?
As chairperson for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file to council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance that has been tabled to allow for additional input, any amendments, and/or changes. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.